That's a proactive for beaten purposes. Let me open a regular meeting, a joint public hearing meeting between the City Council of City Pearland and the Planning and Zoning Commission of City Pearland for Monday, November the 6th, year 2017. I want to thank all of you for being here tonight, appreciate your attendance, and I think that you'll find this an interesting process that we go through in the process of building Pearland. Moving in our agenda to purpose of the hearing, I'll ask Chairman of the Planning Commission to read this into the record for the...
Thank you, Mayor. This is zone change application, Zone 17-00018. This is a request of Shan Patel, applicant on behalf of Kirby 59 Partners, 2 LP, represented by Kirk Leguardia, Leguarta, owner, for approval of a change in zoning from Office Park OP to General Business GB zoning district on approximately 2.1367 acres. The general location is the northeast corner of County Road 59 and Kirby. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Tunstall, if I could just go ahead and open up officially the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission as well. I apologize.
I'm sorry. I guess we'll officially open the Planning and Zoning Commission joint public hearing and let the record state that all commissioners are present.
Thank you.
Okay. That information in the record, let's move in our agenda to item number two, application information case summary, staff report.
Good evening, council members and commission. So since we kind of missed the introductory portion for the agenda, let me go over that real quick, and then I will kick it off to Samin to take care of this zone change report. We have two items for the joint public hearing for tonight's agenda. First is the zone change for northeast corner of 59 and Kirby from Office Professional to General Business, and then we'll have a joint special meeting later on tonight for 1840 Pearland Parkway. Each of these will either have a public hearing or meeting conducted as follows, there'll be a call to order, staff report, applicant presentation, and then the public has comment for either in support or opposition to. Please come forward to the microphone, state your name, address for the record. Please be brief and to the point within a three-minute timeframe, and complete the speaker's card and give it to our recording secretary over on the left-hand side. Afterwards, there will be council, commission, and staff discussion, and then an adjournment for each item. After the joint public hearing, which is first on our agenda, P&amp;Z, Planning and Zoning Commission will hold their regular meeting tonight after all of the hearing is conducted in order to vote on a recommendation. Speaking at the P&amp;Z meeting is at the P&amp;Z's discretion, and the council meeting date for the first and second consideration of that item will be on December 11th and then on December 18th. For the joint special meeting, City Council will hold a vote to either approve, approve with conditions, deny, or tabled item after the discussion is complete. With that in mind, I will now give it to Samin to take care of the report for the first zone change. Thank you.
Okay, that's... Does that complete your staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council member, and commission members. The first case is a zone change. It's a request of principal SMP interest represented by Mr. Shan Patel, applicant on behalf of Kirby 59 Partners, represented by Mr. Kirk Leguarta, owner, for approval of a change in zoning from an Office Park OP to General Business GB zoning district on approximately 2.14 acres of land. The general location is northeast corner of Kirby Drive and CR 59. The request is for a change in zoning from OP to GB. The applicant proposes the development of a small retail center at the corner of Kirby Drive and CR 59. The property was annexed in 1996. So this is a map of the property location. This is a zoning map showing the corner lot of Kirby and CR 59 Zone OP. And this is a future land use map showing that corner is a minor retail note. So this is a view from north, this is a view from south, east, and west side of the property. So before the joint public hearing, we received three notices, two in opposition and one in favor, and two phone calls in opposition of the proposed zone change request. The zone request is in conformance with comprehensive plan, is in conformance with the minor retail note, future land use plan, and also is in conformance with thoroughfare plan, since CR 59 is a secondary thoroughfare. The property is a vacant lot, so there is no residential buffer, so it's not in conformance with Unified Development Code. However, the property owner is required to put a residential buffer by UDC. It's not platted, and in the utility, the property has access to water and sewer utility. And this is the criteria that we go by as far as zoning. And for recommendation, staff recommends approval of the requested change in zoning on the approximately 2.14 acre side of the, I'm sorry, for the following reason. One, the proposed zoning map amendment from OP to GB is consistent with minor retail not land use classification of the property on the future land use map. In addition, retail or commercial use are encouraged to be located at intersection near residential areas. The commercial nature of use is permitted by the change in zoning district classification to GB, and the standards applicable to such use is to be beneficial for the local residents and complement to the NSA adjacent zone. The proposed change to GB zoning is in accord with existing or proposed plans for providing city services and utilities to the area. CR 59 and Kirby Drive have recently been expanded to handle additional traffic volumes. The proposed change in zoning to GB would not substantially affect the public health, safety, malls, and general welfare. And that completes staff reports.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That information in the record, let's move to item B, which would let the applicant make her presentation if she cared to do so.
Okay.
Is the applicant in the audience today? Would like to make a presentation? Good. Be sure and give us your name and address for the prepared workers, since this is a legal public hearing.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council and commissioners. My name is Omar Isfar. I'm an attorney with Wilson, Krebs &amp; Goran, address 2500 Fan Inn, Houston, Texas, 77002. I represent the applicant, Shan Patel, who is a resident of Pearland and has developed in Pearland in the past. I just wanted to take a moment to welcome and applaud and thank staff for their recommendation and for being so easy to work with on this project. As staff pointed out, this is a minor retail node and is consistent with the future land use plan and the comprehensive plan of the city. We think this is going to be a great opportunity to bring a quality development to this intersection that will spur and incentivize future commercial development, consistent with the desire of the city to encourage commercial development at this minor retail node. I'm available to answer any questions, and besides that, we welcome your vote, and we welcome your affirming staff's recommendation.
Good. I appreciate those comments. Thank you. Moving to item C, does the staff have any wrap-up comments at this point? Okay. Moving into our agenda to item four. Let me ask the council to input into the system, I'm sorry, Darren. Oh, I'm sorry, went right by that. Listen to him, it's such a nice one there. Item three on our agenda, which I just bypassed abruptly, persons wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Is there anyone in the audience who would care to enter into the record, a comment statement, or comment of starts that would like to be included in the record tonight? And hearing none or seeing a motion in that direction, let us move over to new business item number four, and I'll ask our City Council Attorney, Councilmember Carbone, if any comments you think appropriate at this point.
Thank you, Mayor. One question on the agenda, page 13 of 14, it shows kind of the aerial map, and it looks like there's a buffer or some sort of setback along that north property line, and I don't know if it's just the way the overlay works. I don't know if any other councilman saw that, but it looks like there's some sort of alleyway or buffer between the residential and the north side. I think it's just how the map overlaid, because in the comments, there was no, there is no setback or anything going on between this parcel and the abutting residential.
You're talking about that thin little strip of yellow?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's just the base aerial photograph and our actual GIS data not quite matching up correctly.
So there is, I mean...
It should, the property line should butt up immediately to that residential property line.
Okay. And correct me if I'm wrong, with that NS portion, did we see conditional use permit recently for that?
Correct.
And I guess if we're going from OP, it seems like the next progression would be NS and then to GB, kind of in a hierarchy, does it make sense to jump all the way from OB, OP to GB?
So the conditional uses that were granted for the NS, if you remember, that was the case that had several different uses that they were adding to. This, from OP to GB, basically levels the playing field between the two. There are still some additional uses that are being granted, but they're not the typical uses. So this kind of effectively does the same thing.
Okay. And the two opposition forms we received, did it state why, why they were opposed to the zone change?
I believe they were just signatures, but I will look them up real quick for you. The first opposed, we prefer to have it stay zoned as an office and professional district. Thank you, and in Jesus's name, it is done, was the first one from Ms. Habasani. And the second one was just signed by Richard Lott in opposition, no additional comment.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember, more?
I guess my only concern would be, and this is something I guess we haven't really hashed out yet in the UDC, would be the lighting to ensure that it's not going to illuminate across the fence line there into the residential areas. So I guess that's my real only concern.
Okay, Colonel Reed?
I have no comment, Mayor.
No comment?
No comment.
No comment.
Ms. Perez?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Carbone stole a little bit of my thunder. I was gonna have the same question about jumping from OP to GB and kind of bypassing the NS. Can I borrow the applicant for just a second? One of the, I'd say, one of the main differentiations between, and staff, correct me if I'm wrong, between GB and Neighborhood Services NS is a lot of the automotive-related uses either are permitted right or right or prevented by conditional use under the GB, but not permitted at all in Neighborhood Services. From my understanding, y'all are looking to just market this piece of land and open up the uses, or do y'all have a specific use that y'all are already targeting?
Well, so there are no concrete plans. Well, first, let me say that even in OP, we can't put an autozone, or even in GB, we can't put an autozone in there. It's not permitted in GB either. And the primary distinction that we find, the reason we welcome the GB recommendation over an NS, is that we want to be able to put a sit-down restaurant or potentially a quick service restaurant, as is allowed in a GB, but requires a conditional use permit under an NS. And so we think that a restaurant is appropriate for this site, and it would serve the community. But besides that, to answer your other question, there are no concrete plans with a future tenant. We are trying, we are talking to a variety of restaurant tenants, which is what we ideally would like to see here.
Okay. Just, you may want to double-check on the autozone, because a GB is allowed by permit on a, auto parts sales indoors only is permitted in GB.
Okay.
And then the outdoor sales is permitted with conditional use permit. But is it the applicant's desire to be able to open that up to QSRs?
Well, we would like to open it up to more than what's permitted in OP. We've been operating under the assumption that auto sales and accessories are not allowed, so that's not something that we've been entertaining. We would like to be able to offer the site to restaurant uses as well, which are not permitted under NS without conditional use permits. And so that's the reason that we are seeking GB. And more to the point, we think that minor retail node designation is consistent, and the comprehensive plan and the future land use plan is consistent with a GB. I don't, I don't know that this retail node benefits from being incrementally rezoned. Rather, it's a vacant site, and a quality development now can last for many years.
Yeah.
And I would rather not see it zoned and rezoned and redeveloped, or at least not lag behind the neighborhood while it should be redeveloped due to an NS designation.
Fair enough. I think, I definitely think the OP allowing, the OP's not appropriate with all its restrictions. I think an NS or GB is okay. You know, perhaps P&amp;Z can take a look at it and see what they think and offer their recommendation. I can't say I would say no to GB, but I think allowing for more conditional uses adjacent to the residential, I can see how that'd be problematic for the owner, but if we still open it up and still give the citizens an opportunity to say, you know, I really don't want to be next to McDonald's, that may be able to be a good compromise.
Well, and again, I, we have every intention of complying with the UDC, the residential buffering standards.
Yes, sir.
Hopefully, no one will be next door to anything, but rather they would drive around to what will hopefully be a very busy and profitable intersection that will provide services to the neighborhood around it.
Thank you very much.
Okay. May I?
Mayor, I thought this has always been a general business. I don't know, when all that development come in, and I was on council, that little node there was held out for general business. I think Libran had it at that time, Julio did, but I don't see any problem with that. I know there is some concern on the lighting part of it, maybe it's black back on the home, you know, that's a good thing, so I really don't have any problem with this.
That's good. That information in the record from council, move to Planning Commission, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Thomas?
Could staff kind of review what the residential buffer standards would be on a GB?
Can do. So they would be required to have a 25-foot buffer with a six-foot masonry wall, or a 30-foot buffer with no wall, and there would be landscaping that would be required within that buffer.
What are the landscaping standards are we talking about? Just random trees, or is it...
Shade trees, one caliper inch per 15 foot of property line, and then a minimum planting of two inches.
That's my big concern, is we're gonna put a McDonald's right behind somebody's back fence, and they're gonna get to see headlights all night, so...
When you said McDonald's, it kind of triggered in my mind that, I think we're replaying this conversation to some extent. I think we had it right across the street earlier this year.
That was a CUP, not a zone change.
Right, but I think the conversation was across the street to make it GB, and then the conversation devolved to it being along all those residential cul-de-sac backyards, and we started talking about the fencing, and somebody mentioned McDonald's and lighting. And then we said, well, let's go with NS and have CUPs inserted for certain things that somebody wanted to develop down the road.
That was part of a CUP, and they are, as part of their CUP, are putting in a masonry wall to buffer, not a straight zone change. Those are my concerns.
Daryl, you have any? Mary?
Anything further, David or Troy?
Yeah, I mean, for me, I don't think I'd be as inclined to recommend the council vote on a GB simply because the gentleman presenting tonight has some modest plans for it, and that's great. But, you know, once it's GB, it's GB forever. Someone else could put in other things, and we haven't had a lot of success coming up with good lighting elements for the UDC, and this can really go in any, in any direction. I'd recommend it, it go with, it go to NS, and if the developer wants to do something that's more aggressive, we can look at it with a CUP. If I just look at those six cul-de-sac backyard properties, abutting up to, I mean, that could be a farm, that could be a Walgreens, that could be a CBS, that could be something three stories tall that looks into backyards, and it could be anything. And certainly, if those people move there, that's not what they had in mind.
If I could, I'd like to address that point. I've worked with various restrictive lighting standards in different cities. For example, Sugar Land has extremely restrictive lighting standards, and I think they're great. I've talked to the applicant about lighting, and we don't intend to have bright, you know, especially those bright LED lights that approach floodlights shining toward anybody's fences. There are very inexpensive shading and deflector options that can keep very bright light on a backyard and almost pitch-black on the other side of it, and that's how we would intend to develop this site.
And I appreciate your intentions. My problem is, is when we zone the same GB, you sell it, the next guy doesn't care about your lighting standards. So that's the big concern as a straight zone change for me personally.
If I could, if I could interrupt you, let our commissioners continue with their comments and go forward from here. Troy, do you have anything?
I guess my only comment is, if we go to GB and open up the CUP process for the businesses in GB that are more aggressive, that it's in close proximity to six homes. I think there were four opposition comments. Were those from four homeowners, or from four of the six homeowners?
They were from people within 200 foot.
But not the commercial property across the street. That'd be the only one, because everybody else was outside.
The two names you mentioned were all ours.
So my only concern is that we're looking at another piece of property tonight that's half an acre smaller than this one. So if we went to GB, we could definitely be looking at a car wash CUP or something like that later for this piece of property that butts up to six, six homes with, and I'm not saying the piece of property's not big enough to do that, it's just a matter, I think the Neighborhood Services is a better fit, but we can discuss it further in our meeting. That's my comment. Thank you, Mayor.
I mean, I would just say, I think it's coupled around the, do we want to allow the restaurant by right, or do we want to allow the restaurant by conditional use permit? They're both allowed in both zones, just one requires the CUP and one does not. And the CUP, we could add lighting restrictions if we chose, but the GB, if it's permitted by right, we can't make any changes, and there's no, there's no legal way we can make those stipulations on the zone change.
And the Neighborhood, the Neighborhood Services are gonna require lighting as well, so that we can have lighting issues with Neighborhood Services, same as with anything else, so...
Yeah, I agree with that, but I think with GB, you can get, you can get businesses that are more aggressive in their lighting than you would normally find in NS. But you're right, NS can shine spotlights anywhere they want.
I think that's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, let's move to staff, have any wrap-up comments?
I think we've talked about everything.
We beat it to death.
Okay, very good. Thank you. With that information wrapped up, then I'll move to item five on our agenda, which let me adjourn this joint public hearing at 6:56. Moving in our agenda to item number two in our packet, which is a joint special meeting between the City Council and the City of Pearland, zoning commission for Monday, November the 6th, year 2017. And I would like to thank our city attorney, may have a few comments on this. This is a altered and slightly different approach to resolving the CUP problem.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Just very briefly, I'd just, for the benefit of the audience this evening, just give a little bit of summary of what's about to occur, because this is a new process. The council just recently adopted to the Unified Development Code with respect to how CUPs are considered by the council and the Planning and Zoning Commission. This evening, what will happen is, as we open the meeting in just a moment, there will be a call to order for both of the council and the commission, and then a roll call, and then the new business will be approached, and that, of course, will be, it'll really be sort of establishing a public hearing. In this particular case, coming up, it'll be a CUP for car wash in a current planned development. After that, staff will do like they typically do. There will be information presented through a staff report, and then the applicant will be allowed to present information as well. And then there will be a, let me make sure, persons wishing to speak for or against the application, and then council and the planning commission will have discussion. We'll start off with the Planning and Zoning Commission first and receive comments from them. Then after that, then the council will be able to offer any comments, and then, of course, any questions by staff will be addressed in that process. And then finally, at the very end, there's another new business item, and that new business item is where the council will actually have a, need to make a motion and a second to put the CUP on for consideration, and then a formal vote will be taken this evening, unless it were postponed for some reason, a formal vote will be taken by the council at that time.
That information in the record, and this particular joint special meeting is opened already. Let's move in our agenda to new business, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor.
A conditional use...
Yep, yes.
Just to clarify, because technically, this is a new and separate meeting from our other one, so we'll need to open up the meeting again like we did the prior meeting.
We need to do it right.
Both, the mayor will need to open it up for the city council, and of course, Mr. Tunstall will then open it up for the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay, this is the call to order, this is open for the council and Planning and Zoning Commission.
We did adjourn that.
We'll read through this, and then I'll, yeah.
Likewise, I'll open the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting Monday, November 6th, 2017. All commissioners are present.
Moving in our agenda, item number four, application information case summary, staff report.
I think, we'll go with new business item one. Conditional use permit application number CUP 17-00019. This is a request of Rhymes 5D Studio, represented by David W. Rhymes, applicant on behalf of Pearland Car Wash Services LLC, represented by Ahmad H. Jaffar, Jaffar Ali.
represented by Ahmad H. Jaffar, Jaffar Ali, owner, for approval of a conditional use permit, CUP, to allow for a car wash to be located in the planned development PD zoning district on approximately one point six zero three five acres. This general location is eighteen forty Pearland Parkway. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Secretary of State, staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council and planning commission. So tonight, we have CUP seventeen dash zero 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 one nine. The summary of the request is, it's an undeveloped property located within the Stonebridge Planning Development along Pearland Parkway. PD zoning districts encourage a variety of different mixed uses within the areas. And so this proposed development tonight is for a auto car wash, which will be self-service. And the surrounding areas, there are also zone PD. And these land uses are a pre- K, pre-kindergarten school to the north, a bank to the south, office retail to the east, and single-family residential to the south of the subject property. This is exhibit one, which is the zoning and aerial map. And highlighted in red is the subject property. This is exhibit two, which is the future land use map. And the future land use map designation has it as retail offices and services. This is a copy of the site plan that was submitted by the applicant. This is a view facing north from the subject property. This is a view facing south. This is a view facing east. And this is a view facing west on subject property. Public comments. Prior to tonight's joint special meeting, staff has received two return notices in opposition from the same property owner and six phone calls in opposition of the proposed conditional use permit request. This is our code conformance table. So in regards to the comprehensive plan, looking at it as retail offices and services in our future land use plan designation, this use possibly could fit that description. As far as the thoroughfare plan is concerned, Pearland Parkway is a major thoroughfare of sufficient width. According to the Unified Development Code, the proposed land use designation within the PD is general business, which possibly this land use could fall into that category. The subject property has been platted and it was platted as a replat of tract A of the amending plat of Stonebridge, section one. As far as utilities are concerned, the subject property currently has access to sanitary sewer facilities. And if approved, their plans are to tie into the city's water line, which runs along the eastern portion of Pearland Parkway. This is a list of the criteria for approval in section two point two, three point four A of the Unified Development Code. Recommendation. Planning staff does not recommend approval of the requested CUP for auto wash cell service on approximately one point six zero three five acre site for the following reasons. Proposed use of an auto wash cell service at the specified location is possibly consistent with the policies embodied with retail offices and services category of the comprehensive plan. The proposed use is consistent with the general purpose and intent of the underlying base zoning district of the PD, general business zoning district, purpose and regulations. However, the actions taken after the establishment of the underlying base zoning classification were intended to reduce the spread of automotive uses along the city's major corridors. In two thousand and sixteen, there was a PD amendment which was approved suggesting that automobile uses within the PD along Pearland Parkway would have to get a conditional use permit. Number three. The proposed use is not compatible with and does not preserve the character and integrity of adjacent developments and neighborhoods within the PD. Number four, the proposed use would generate pedestrian and vehicular traffic, which would be hazardous or conflict with the existing and anticipated traffic within the neighborhood. Number five. The proposed use does not generate enough traffic to require incorporation of roadway adjustments, traffic control devices or mechanisms. Number six. The proposed use does not incorporate features to minimize adverse effects, including visual impacts of the proposed conditional use on adjacent properties. And number seven. The proposed use meets the standards for a PD zoning district. However, this PD was adopted at a time prior to the enhanced screening and buffering between commercial and residential uses. An enhanced landscape buffer meeting today's UDC standards should be provided so as to render the use compatible on the site within the adjoining neighborhoods. And this completes staff reports. Now I'm gonna leave the site plan up here for the city council as well as the planning and zoning commission.
Good, I appreciate that. Moving to item number two, is applicant presentation. And thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city council members and planning and zoning commission. I appreciate the opportunity y'all have given us to come by and present Rapid Express Car Wash and debunk any thought process that it's a self-service. It is not a self-serve car wash. I brought with me my team. David Rhimes, the architect who designed it. Mario Longzett, civil engineer. Jesse Brey, who built over thirty car washes in Houston area. And obviously, you gotta wait for the bank manager to leave the mic, so he's here with me as well. But we built many washers over the time. And none of them are self-serve. I did wanna go back to one of the pages that the staff skipped before recommendation and where it was all zoned for a car wash or it's been zoned to do with business. But the explanation of this car wash, it's a, it's a fully automated car wash. It's a tunnel, it's a hundred forty foot tunnel. And customers are in and out in less than five minutes. The whole process of washing their car and drives before it comes out the front door is two and a half minutes. It probably takes two minutes to get to the front and go. So it is a completely conveyor belt car wash where a customer stays in the car. It's not that they're walking around, it's not that there's a lobby, it's not that they're front crashing before. It is, they're in the car, they drive, they drive up, they get the car washed and eighty percent of the customers leave the premises. They do have an option to vacuum their car, which is a free service provider. A project like this is about a three million dollar car wash, it is not a self-serve. The Rapid Express Car Wash, we see the cover page, we are members of the Southwest Cars Association, International Cars Association, as well as Water Saber, one of the very few car washers in Houston area that recycles seventy percent of the water. And you have to be, you have to be able to use biodegradable products, the certain criteria to wash cars and to be a member of the ICA. And the pictures that you see, the pictures that you see is one of the car washes that we just did on Huffmeister across from the, on Two Ninth, across from the hospital and by residential and hotels. And that's, that's what it looks like in the evening. That's the entryway, that's just a front facade, every car wash is built differently based on the land size. And so it's not a self-serve, you can see where the car is being washed and actually it's getting factory water. We all, we only use top rate equipment, we have McNeil. And the products that we use, the chemistry that we use is, it's household name, you guys know Zap, Blue Car, Rain Next. They are biodegradable products. Most of our employees are uniformed, it is men and staff. But it is automated as well. The landscape that we designed and you can have a copy of it, the eleven by seventeen sheet that has four, four pages. One of them is the site survey, site layout, the secondary page is the storm drainage. The third page, which is very important to all the neighbors that live here, is that we've added eighteen trees, two to three caliper trees all around the neighborhood to make sure that it has buffers and it has twenty-five foot buffers on. So customers, neighbors will not, will not be impacted by the business. And the last page, if you notice, is lighting. To make sure that no backyards have light. By the way, the hours of operation is eight to eight, it does not stay out till ten o'clock, it does not stay after that. Everybody's gone home. It does have very minimum impact to the two neighbors behind us. What's the benefit of having this car wash in Pearland? Well, this will be the only car wash in Pearland, on Pearland Parkway. The closest car wash that is similar to this car wash is four point one miles away called the Eye Shine on Broadway, all the way by Home Depot. There is no other car wash like this on Pearland Parkway. A car wash like this, like I said, talks about three million dollars just to build. And we do hire members of the community, obviously, as well as the tax bases that go with it. There is a Google map that shows the property spot, where it is located and, and how far it is from the nearest competitor. We, we built, we, we actually operate now seven car washes in Cypress, Katy, Spring, Beaumont, Victoria. And we have, we're building one in Bastrop, Kyle, hopefully in Pearland and Full Show on Katy on fourteen sixty-three. Right in City of Katy with Cross Creek Development. This, we, we design car washes that have earned awards. And the reason I say that is we're just not any car washers you say, we're not self-serve. And I've tried to correct that in the past with planning and zoning, but they still call it self-serve. It is not where you wash your own car. Our car washers have great curb appeals, professional employees. We are very cognizant of our neighbors, we're very cognizant of the bank, the daycare and the two, three star neighbors behind us. That's why we have built a buffer zone of twenty-five feet. We have put trees in there and there is a masonry wall. So we do comply with all the, all the facts that are needed for this car wash to be built. What are the concerns that neighbors will have? The level of noise of the blowers? Let me, let me debunk that, let me talk about it. If you look at the site plan, the blowers are all the way in the front on Pearland Parkway. They're not in the back where the neighbors are. And they're almost two hundred and seventy feet, and they're, actually they're enclosed, they're inside the building, they're not outside. And they're about two hundred and seventy feet from any of our neighbors, it's any from the bank, because the property is three hundred feet wide. And the neighbors in the bank are almost two hundred feet away. I do have, I have included in my, you will see that where the trees are planted, all the way in the back, all the way around. And eighteen trees. We have added two hundred and sixty shrubs to enclose the dumpster also to put some here so that it gives some kind of a barrier between the bank and us. There's two hundred and sixty shrubs put in. There's a lot of green space to make sure that this is the best car wash in Pearland Parkway. Nothing has been spared. This is not our first project, we've built many like these. And unless the elevation of the property in the front, side elevation and, this is an overview of what the canopies will look like, a young design. The decibels of the blowers. Usually when a car is sitting in idle or when, on, driving by on Pearland Parkway, the decibels are about seventy decibels on a vehicle. But as you get twenty feet away, the decibels drop by twenty decibels. The blowers are, and we use what we call VFAs, variable frequency drives. So the decibel sounds are much, it's not a high ramp up. And, and a vacuum, we use ten horsepower, sorry, fifty horsepower blowers and the decibel's only seventy-two if you're standing right there. If you walk away twenty feet, the decibels drop by twenty decibel points. It is negligible, there will not be any sound to any of the, any of the neighbors or our, or the bank or the daycare. Even our blowers for vacuum motors are all enclosed. There is no sound. There will be, but there's no, none that a, a regular year won't pick it up. The, we had designed this car wash, this is a two-year process. We had designed it in two thousand and fifteen and we were given a permit February twenty-second, two thousand and sixteen for a car wash by City of Pearland. We've actually paid our commercial building permit fees and a site work permit in two thousand and sixteen. Now, why did we not build a car wash or why did we not take the whole permit right away? We were actually waiting on Crowver to be built on Pearland Parkway and Rosebud Road. When Pearland went into construction, we said, okay, it's time to build a car wash at the same time because of synergy to the area. It would be good time to build a car wash. That's the only reason that car wash permit was not pulled, because I do realize that once you pull a permit, you have to break ground in ninety days. And we figured that when we wait for Crowver to be built, we'll build it at the same time. I did not, and I don't think anybody knew, that the, the rules will change from, and a CUP will be adopted. And, and, and the last page is, keep in mind, the last page is you will see where the issue, where the permit was issued. And, and the building permit amounts are already paid, site work permit's been paid. This is zoned for a car wash. And we, as business owners and somebody who lives in communities as well, we will do whatever it takes to make sure that we are not a nuisance to anybody around whatsoever. Because we've invested a million dollars, we paid for the land, we paid for the drawings several times, we've paid for some permits. And we've done everything possible, we just delayed the project, so we're waiting on Crowver. And we actually have a million dollars cash invested in done, we have, in this piece. And you can see where the application, Crowver next step, where the permit status was issued. So new service station is what they call it, it's not a self-serve gentleman. So new service station is what they call it, it's not a self-serve gentleman. And, and, and if you have any questions to ask, any of our members here who've built washes before, please ask me, and I'm more than welcome to answer all your questions than anybody here on my team.
I appreciate your presentation, and thank you very much. Let's move in our agenda down to item five. Would anyone in the audience who would care to do so, and would like to enter into the record a comment, statement, or comments? Please, and be sure you fill out one of these forms, and I think it's already, at least she has one already prepared. Good. You can fill it out when you go through, and bring it back up to her. These forms are required because this is a, a, a documented public hearing, which is require certain, more requirements for our conduct and the recording and adherence to legal procedures. And thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Your honor.
I'm Dennis Bond, and I'm president and CEO of Heritage Bank, who is the neighboring property. A couple interesting things from our perspective. When we, when I bought the land and began the project of building the headquarters for the bank here in Pearland on the Parkway, Bill Eisen was city manager, and I requested a meeting with Mr. Eisen, and we went and had lunch. And I wanted to discuss with him the Pearland Parkway overlay. And I said, Bill, I'm probably going to be a little different than most people, but I'm here to tell you, I think what you're trying to do on the Parkway is wonderful. And I'm here to hope, as a business owner who's about to invest millions of dollars, that you hold to this overlay district, and that you meet the vision for your city, which is having, really something Pearland has struggled to have, and I think the Parkway has provided the opportunity, which is, all the growth that has hit Pearland, seldom has there been a corridor where the city has had the opportunity to develop that corridor in the vision that they really desire an entrance to the city to be. And so I commended him and the city for having the overlay district on the Parkway, and said, I want to build something that the city will be very proud of. I'm hoping that we will help kind of set off the development that will occur on the Parkway, so that you can have first-class buildings that are your entrance into your community. And I think that is, not to speak for others, but I think that is what the vision of the Parkway was, why there was an overlay district, why there is an overlay district, and what we're trying to accomplish. So my concern, and I think the city's staff comments were exceptionally well-presented and laid out, but if you think about it, in just this one block, you would end up having two gas stations, the childcare, Kids Are Kids, which is a great facility, and then the car wash, and then the bank. I don't think that's the vision that was set out when we were working on Pearland Parkway. And I think one of the points to probably drive that home is that the gentleman who sold them the property called me at the point of getting ready to do the contract, and he said, hey Dennis, I don't think you're going to like who we're selling this property to, so I wanted to call you first and see if the bank wanted to buy it, because I didn't think this would be exactly the fit everyone's looking for. I didn't appreciate that, to be brutally honest. Obviously, we didn't buy the property, but I implored him to reconsider his decision, which he had every right to do as such. Just some specifics, I wasn't as prepared to get into real details, but I'm, I'm a little concerned, the property's three hundred feet, the gentleman said, and he said that it would be, the car wash would be two hundred feet away from the bank, and it wouldn't affect the daycare with the Kids Are Kids. Well, the problem is, if it's two hundred feet away from the bank, then it's incredibly close to Kids Are Kids. I mean, it can't be one or the other, if you follow the logic on that. But the bottom line is, and I, I think it's beeping, so I'm going to wrap it up, but the bottom line is, I think the city has tried to do the right thing on the Parkway, and tried to have a great new entrance. And when I say new one, the city had the ability to control into, into Pearland, and I would recommend and encourage and beg of you to hold to that. You have the opportunity to do that, and we'd greatly appreciate it if you would. Thank you.
Good. I appreciate those comments, thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to enter into the record or comment You can fill that out, and then take it over here. Thank you for being here tonight, sir.
Thank you for having me, City Council.
Would you give us your name and address so we can...
Joseph Sebastian with S&amp;P Interest, twenty-three fifteen Commerce Street. Thank you for having us out tonight. In our endeavors to help develop Pearland, and the, the struggles that, that we have to overcome as developers, property owners, we're all trying to satisfy our, our neighbors and those around us, and creating buffers, and so on and so forth. One, I think a hot topic is personal wants, right? The gentleman from Heritage Bank stood up, and, you know, we really appreciate him being in the community, but what he's proposing kind of goes against the, kind of a free capital market, if you will, to deter certain types of uses, because it may not fit with one's own ideals or visions of, of the Parkway, I think can open up a, kind of a Pandora's box, if you will, to have the individual, the individual users' issues against certain types of uses. As, as developers, we're trying to meet the needs of the community, and I think that is, you know, should be taken into consideration, being that, you said this, you know, and there's, there's no other car wash for four miles around. It's pretty tough to, you know, to fight traffic when you, you live in this neighborhood, and you come home, and you want to see certain services. And just kind of following up on his lighting, you know, the buffers that are created between commercial and residential, really minimize any type of annoyance, if you will, coming from a commercial use, lighting, noise, things of that nature. Thanks for hearing me out, guys.
Good. I appreciate those comments, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to enter into record or comment or statement regarding this proposed request? And seeing none, our movement in that direction. Let's move in our agenda down to item number six, and I'll start with the... Any appropriate comments?
Guess we'll start with the commissioner's comments, this, this is a new process, I guess we'll start with Thomas, and see if you have any comments.
So my big concern is really the Kids Are Kids. Kind of surprised they didn't show up tonight. They have kids that are napping at noon time, and I don't know if I'd want blowers next to me, if I was trying to keep a bunch of zero to five-year-olds napping. So I have a big, I have big concerns about the blowers and how close they are to them. Now, I like that they have the, well, the things they inherited, but I like that they did widen the buffer zone on the backside and the other side as well. I mean, those are, those are my big concerns.
Sir, if you look at it, are you...
If we could, we'll just wait for... Daryl, or Thomas, you're next.
Yeah. Another comment I have is, what is the hours of operation? That is, you know, eight to eight? Okay. And, because I live, not by one of theirs, but I live by the one that he's talking about, by, that's four miles away, and, and I wish that Dad, Dad had the forethought to turn that blower around and face it toward Pearland Parkway instead of the, instead of directed at our houses. But, but, you know, and like Thomas, also, I wonder about the kids next door. You know, I, I know what he's talking about on the decimal parts, and, you know, we've got a, we've all got equipment in our house and stuff, and it's got these decimal ratings and stuff on it, but I just can't believe that the blower motor is going to be as quiet as my dishwasher is going to be at, at forty feet away. It, it, you know, I can barely hear it, it's a fifty-six decibel. I might be just deaf, but, but, you know, that's fifty-six decibels is, is not really all that loud. And he's saying that it'd be sixty-six at twenty feet, and so fifty-six at forty feet. So, you know, I, I, you know, I just have concerns about, about the, the daycare with that. As far as the wall is concerned, it shows, what, a seven-foot wall?
Yes. Existing.
It just seems to me that, you know, something ought to be done, if they're going to, if, if this thing does go through, there ought to be something done about a sound wall that's, that's higher than that in order to, to, to enclose that noise as much as possible. So, that's all I've got.
I'll make sure Mary has a microphone.
This is one of those things that's really hard to dis, to decide. I really don't think we need any more automotive things along Pearland Parkway. That's, excuse me, that's my starting point. I think the project itself is a good project. Probably one of the better ones that we'll see presented to us. It's just, I'm not, I just don't want the location at all.
Thanks. So a couple of things, first of all, I think it's a, it looks like a beautiful facility. And while I'm, I'm not an expert, and it, it does seem like very few costs were spared, and you, and you tried to put a nice package together. I, I also just have, have to mention that it almost sounds like you bought the property when it was permissible to do this, and then the rules changed, and now you're kind of in, in this spot. So I definitely sympathize with the developer for that. But I'm also just considering this type of business, so close to residential, just so, in such close proximity to, to that and Kids Are Kids, I, I just don't think that's what people would have wanted to have there when they bought the properties and built their businesses. I just don't think it's the right location for this.
I guess the question that I have is, can this project be grandfathered in since they paid all this money upfront? And what can City Council do about that?
That would technically not be grandfathered in, because the, the building permit has expired, so.
That completes your comments. All right, the items, I had a couple of questions for someone on the applicant side. How many vacuum motors are there total? So you have a master vacuum system for the entire place?
Yes, it's a central vacuum system, so it's not like it comes on every time, on and off. It's on a VFD low, low frequency, just stays on, and you just pick up the vacuum hose, and so there's no noise, then the vacuum's sucking from your car. I mean, this is, this is top of the line, this is not, this is not, this is a central vacuum system.
Okay, thank you. He's answered the question of the hours of operation. And this is to staff. What's the history with, I believe it's Eye Shine, as far as complaints? Do we, do we have any information on the number of complaints from that similar car wash? Because that one's a lot further away from residential than this one would be, and I'm curious if the, if we have complaint history with noise from that facility.
Or for any of them that are abutted to residential, if that, if we can do that.
My only, my only point there is, is I, I've heard that there was issues with the blowers at Eye Shine and the surrounding area. I don't know the particulars, and, and there may not be, I don't, I don't know, that's why I'm asking. But we're a lot closer with this one, with the facility, to the, to residential and the abutting commercial with the daycare. I'm just curious if there's any, any information there that could help with this. The, if, my opinion is, I, I don't like it there. I, I don't think it's the right business there. It kind of drove the whole, there's too many automotive things along Pearland Parkway for a road that we spent a lot of money putting in. We created this, this spot for businesses, and I believe the city has the right to, to determine what businesses can go there and not, by, by way of, of planned developments, zonings, and CUPs. If we approve this, if, I say we, if it's approved, I would like to see the business hours limited from at least nine to seven, and not to eight, if it goes in there. And if there was any way that we could guarantee for the city that, that these lower noise motors and VFDs would be installed, that that can be confirmed. Because there is a significant difference in the, in the noise ratio between VFD and non-VFD motors. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
That wraps it up, huh?
That concludes the commission's comments.
Move down to council. You want to voice, would you pick it up?
Appreciate it, Mayor. Yeah, looking at the site plan, you got, you got a ride in and ride out. So it's telling me that the people are coming in to vacuum the car first before they go through the tunnel.
There is, not necessarily, because once they go into vacuum, they, they have to go back out and go around the pay station. So once they come make a right turn, and you make a left, and go make a right to the pay station here, sir, come in, and you enter right here.
Yeah, okay.
And then you go around, and either you exit out, or you go in and vacuum your car.
And you got the ride in, ride out, and you got traffic crossing. People coming in, if somebody's going out, they have to cut in, cross in front of them in order to come around to this side.
We do have, the way it's designed is that there is, I'd like a stop sign there. We can have four cars behind it without being constrained.
Yeah. And then you come in on the backside and go in the tunnel, and you come back out, and you got to cross over the traffic again to go back out and do a ride out if you're through. So it seems like, and you ride in, ride out, you got a lot of congestion there. It could have.
We do have several exits as well. There is a cross-access easement here. There is access in the back. This property has a driveway right there. I mean, there are a lot of ways people can come in, there are a lot of ways people can go out. This was designed to accommodate, an easy flow of traffic. I do realize what you're saying in the front.
Yeah. And I'm probably, well, besides the mayor, I'm probably the only one that stood on top of the bridge across Clear Creek when we opened this project, and it is in an overlay district, and we spent a ton of money in order to bring it into an overlay district. And for me, myself, we've had a lot of people talk about how positive it is for Pearland Parkway. I live adjacent to it on Country Club, but the thing about it is that, that right now we're generating a lot of traffic. A lot of times, coming in, I'm backed up from the Exxon station all the way to five-eighteen. So it, it is a lot of traffic. But to be honest with you, this is not something that we envisioned when we opened this up and when we spent the money on it. You know, a lot of people say it's a beautiful Parkway, and which I think it is, it's a, it's something good for the, the city of Pearland. And I just think, you know, what you have is a good model, but I think it's just the wrong location.
We've done an impact study, that's enclosed, impact study as well. This would be one of the nicest-looking businesses that I can assure you. It could be designed right, it would be taken care of, and it would be monitored. I, there is no reason, and it does, there is a need. It is, there's thirty minutes to, to go to Eye Shine, it's about time you get the Broadway traffic, no? I mean, it is quite, it is driving time. All right, maybe I'm off on the timeline, but there is definitely a need for this business.
Sir, sir, we, we need to realize that. Anyway, that's the...
We'll call on you one minute, ask you questions, and that way, we'll, we'll need to get the council to put their comments in.
The, I used that other car wash one time, and I don't go back, I used it on five-eighteen while I was driving, and then washed it, cleaned it up, and I get the car in. And that's what I wish that. But, you know, and I think you got a good product, I think you're just in the wrong spot, to be honest with you, in a conversion of way that I would have looked.
Is this on ProGB?
Sir, so that, right now, we can't really dialogue, we kind of go through it in organized fashion, so I apologize. Um, we kinda go through it in organized fashion, so I apologize.
Let's let the council give us your comments. If you have any questions you need to get clarified, and we'll call if it happens. If you have a complete comment after a couple of words?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. First, I want to comment on the process. I do think, um, this is the first project that's coming through, um, this process. I do think that, um, you know, us getting used to the new system, um, will take some time, but I do think that this overall is a vast improvement. Getting the input from P and Z early, allowing us to be able to finalize this, this decision as opposed to it carrying over several, several months. You know, I, I, I'm really in between, coming into this meeting, I'm really in between, so I, I started digging into it, um, you know, really make sure that I, I feel comfortable with the decision I make. I will tell you, I live in the neighborhood, and I get my car washed a lot. Um, I, I can't tell you that I'm really compelled that this would be a whole lot of convenience for me that I would, I would desire to have. Um, but that's just speaking for me as a singular customer. Um, I think where I get, where I have difficulty is, um, those, those two gas stations came in, and we heard a lot from the neighborhood as to why those gas stations were allowed, particularly be right next to each other. We heard a lot of people that were speaking out against it. When, uh, when y'all were initially coming in, there was some, some talk about, you know, trying to limit us, the amount of automotive uses along, uh, in certain areas of town, particularly in these, these, um, these corridor overlay areas. And we went through quite a lot of effort to try and limit the amount of, um, automotive uses. Really, this is the area that triggered it. It triggered the conversation. Um, so that kinda compels me in a direction. I, I have a couple of concerns, and then, I mean, this kinda really goes to staff, and maybe I can get some clarification on this, because this wouldn't be the only one. But I'm looking on corridor overlay section in P and Z, or I'm sorry, UDC, under Division Five. And so we're in section, uh, five dot one, uh, D four. Um, and the provision is, uh, any building that requires openings of the facade or for, for vehicle entry or exit shall be oriented such that the openings do not face the public roadways unless adequately screened to minimize the visual impact of the roadway. Um, man, I kinda feel like the orientation of this, even if it was allowed, doesn't even meet the UDC, um, because the exit faces the major thoroughfare. Um, yeah, you know, that, we could talk about that, and maybe a variance could be granted if, 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 um, staff agrees with my interpretation of that criteria. But the other thing is, in order to be able to get, get the site to work, you know, when we plan, we require the, um, the, the mutual access. The intent is so we can space the driveways. Um, you know, so we, we wanna maintain our access management so that we can have a safer roadway. And that means that two, two businesses that may not necessarily be owned by the same entity has, have to share a driveway. That's the reason why the bank had to put that driveway in front there, is because that, that was the only way for them to be able to get access off of Pearland Parkway. Um, so you do have the right to do that. I don't know if I'm comfortable with the mutual access agreement requiring that you, I mean, your dumpster basically faces their property. Um, they, they would have to, I mean, the dumpster, the dumps, the dumpster truck, your, the people that come up and pick up your trash have gotta go into the bank's property to get your trash to get out.
No, sir, that, there's, there's...
It's, it's, it's not, it's not, it's, it's not a dialogue, I'm sorry. Um, there's a, there's a sliver, there's a sliver that's yours, but it's not a drive that's contained in yours. Um, and I, I know, I'm just, I know how trucks operate, that truck's not gonna stay on your property. Um, you know, all of those individual things, I think, are, are minimalistic. And I, like, I am hu- one hundred percent apologetic for the circumstance that you're in and that the rules have changed over, over a period of time when you made your initial investment until when you were, uh, participating in that. I, I understand that. I, I apologize that, that there has been a change of the system on you. But the system was changed specifically to, for us to prevent almost this specific thing in this specific location. Um, it wa- was an awful lot of discussion to, to talk about how we can get further protection along our corridors to prevent automotive uses, which we heard from, and other uses, it wasn't the only one, but we got a lot of input from people who just said that they didn't want them in these locations. I think for that, for those reasons, you know, I think it's a great development. I think it's, you know, really could bring value to Pearland. Uh, in another location, I, I'm, I'm just compelled to a no. I just don't think this is really gonna be the right fit.
Let's, uh, remember that we're expressing our position as a city council and not carry a debate between the applicant and the city council at this point. This is your chance to state your position on what you feel like it is, Councilman.
No.
No comment, Mayor.
Or no?
We, we've heard a lot about Pearland Parkway and the overlay. Can we get a history from staff of the allowance of this use on, in that overlay?
Sure thing. So in, uh, I believe it was July of last year, we had the ordinance come through for Stone Bridge, for Highland Glen and Oak Brook. Those were the three, uh, planned developments that had commercially base-zoned property within their planned developments along Pearland Parkway. Um, we tackled all three of them all at once to get, you know, the same message out to everyone saying, uh, that this was to reduce, uh, automotive uses within Automotive Pawn Shop and Check Cashing, uh, tho- those uses off of Pearland Parkway. Uh, those amendments were passed, they were dropped into the planned developments. Uh, and then we went with the remainder of the planned developments with a slightly tweaked amendment to all of them, uh, later on.
Right, but, but the use was allowed until that took place. So I, I, I just find it interesting that I was not on council when, when Pearland Parkway was built, but for a comment to be, be made that this wasn't a vision, well, it, it was allowed. Whether it was a vision or not, it, it wasn't allowed use. Um, I, I voted against the limitation of those. I, I've stated it multiple times, and I'll be as concise as I can again. I don't want someone telling me to do what, what to do on my property, therefore I can't tell someone else what to do on theirs. And if we truly believe in limited government, and we truly believe in property owners and their rights, then I, I, I struggle with this. I, it's, I struggle with it even more because the rules are changed midway through the game. Um, not once, actually, but twice, because the first time we changed the rules, we realized, oh, the PD overrides our change. So now we need to go back and fix loophole that's in the PD. So it's actually been attempted to be changed twice here. Um, and, and as a property owner in a country and a state that believes in private rights, I, I, I struggle with zoning in general. I really struggle when we get down to this level and we start talking about motor sizes and things of that. Now, I use Eye Shine, uh, might move over, Pearland Parkway would be closer. Um, I, I will say to try to compare the two on noise, I think it's gonna be difficult at best because they have individual vacuums, they have two tunnels with blowers, there is no wall behind it. It, it's, the, the two projects aren't comparable, um, if you're going to look at a noise, no, noise issue on it. Um, now, if you're looking at aesthetics and all that, you're, you're talking to the wrong person. Talk to somebody else up here, because, um, you can talk to almost any developer I've met with when they show me renderings, I don't care. It's your building, go make it look the way you want to. What is the business going to do for the community?
Okay, come on a little. Senator Ortono and Councilmember Reed.
No comments, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to address, um, the gentleman that talked about, this goes against the, the free capital market. Um, when the city adopted zoning, that went out the window.
I'm glad we said we don't have free market.
Yeah, with zoning, that, that changes everything. Um, also, just to comment, um, a- as a developer, you play the market. You even said that you waited for Kroger to be built, um, and then Kroger did not build. Um, if you would've went through with your original plan, this would've already been built, and we wouldn't be talking about it now. Um, but I do have concerns with, uh, traffic and lighting that would be at the facility because of, um, the residential piece behind it. Um, but I really don't think that this is a great location for this, um, only because there's two gas stations right up the street from that. Um, well, not even up the street, just the next lot over. Um, so I, I think it's a great facility, it looks like a great car wash, but I don't think this is the right place for it.
Councilmember Carbo.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, during staff's presentation, I mentioned opposition that was mailed in and called in. Did, was there any specifics in addition to what's already been mentioned? And do we know if that opposition was in the two-hundred-foot boundary?
Uh, both oppositions were from Heritage Bank. So they would definitely, um, we had, since this was originally scheduled for October, we, uh, sent two sets of letters out, which is why I say there are two letters of opposition, because they returned both notifications that were sent out to them. Um, so, paraphrase, it's really one owner with two, uh, notifications. Uh, but it was Heritage Bank for both letters.
Okay, and I think there was some phone calls received in opposition?
Uh, correct, we did have a couple, a couple of questions, uh, from people that either saw the, uh, saw the sign or received a letter and wanted to know more information about it.
Let's all have, Mayor.
Okay. Well, for the good comments, and appreciate the support that the response is needed. And, uh, moving in our agenda, we, this, uh, special joint special meeting is really a two-part meeting, and it reflects the way that we're working with additional use permits from, from now on through, into the future. And, uh, we have gone through what is called a, uh, our public, public hearing on the project, and we fini- we have now finished the public project portion. And we need to go through the process now, which we had just recently corrected and made, and made a part of our, of our process and agenda way of working. We move in our agenda to item number seven. This is hated, City Council, new business. And I'll ask Councilmember Carbone if he'll put this item on the agenda for our consideration as a city council.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration Possible Action Resolution R twenty seventeen dash CUP seventeen dash zero 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 one nine, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor, and a comment from the City Council. Here, there are none, with Mr. Secretary, we do have motion second on the floor.
Councilmember Carbone?
No.
Councilmember Moore?
No.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Councilmember Ordno?
Yes.
Councilmember Little?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
No.
Councilmember Owens?
No.
Motion failed five to the two.
Okay. Moving to item eight on our agenda, permission made to call the Department of General at seven fifty-six.
May I say something before I leave?
Sure, you have the floor.
Mayor said yes. I'll, I'll put you a little political slack.
Thank you. I'm a business owner who's willing to do whatever it takes to make that place compatible to the neighbors, and there's no reason to fail this. I, a CUP, I understand, but... There's a will and a desire to be amicable to your neighbors. I know, and you won't find any more better partner in this to make it amicable to all my, all my neighbors. And I'm putting that on the table today. I've said it, and I've done it. We've designed it based on what we know. And is there anything missing? I'll talk to the Heritage Bank, I'll talk to them, I'll make it work. But you won't find a better amicable partner in business than I am. And I, I, I wish I had not waited, not knowing that the rules would change. Nobody can read anybody's mind. This was granted as a, as a, a, a car wash site. It was approved, it was, went through the process, went through red tape, did what we had to do to make it happen.
I think your project is a good project, it's just not the location for it. Appreciate y'all's, uh, work on this, and hope that you'll find a good location and make that thing work. We need one in town. Moving in our agenda. Wait till we get the mic reset, the computer reset over there. Yeah, okay. We have a special council meeting for, City Council for November the sixth, two thousand and seventeen. And, uh, moving into new business, item number one. I'll ask Councilmember Moore if he'll present this on, put this on the table.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration Possible Action Resolution Number R two zero one seven dash two three six, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. Any items, comments from City Council at this point?
Ma- Mayor, this is, um, an item asking your authorization on a resolution to, um, recommend to Congress that we, that they allocate funding for the Clear Creek Core Project, um, coming up in November. The, um, Harris County Flood Control District, they are recommending that this project move forward. They're asking Congress for additional funding. Uh, the funding for this project, as many of you know, this project has been on the books since the early sixties. Funding hasn't been made available for it. There's been some minor improvements, improvements done along Clear Creek over the years. There was a study that was done in the early two thousands. In two thousand and twelve, there was a recommendation to move forward with the improvements along Clear Creek, but there hasn't been any funding for it. So what we're asking you here to do this evening is to approve this resolution, uh, showing your support for this next round of congressional funding that will be going before Congress later this month. This is one of several projects that will be recommended. Just on a side note, I wanted you to know that the, uh, Brazoria County Drainage District Number Four, they have this on their agenda tomorrow for their consideration. Our staff and their staff have worked together on this, along with Harris County, and we recommend your approval.
Okay. I think it's appropriate, the wording and the, the resolution, I think, is very appropriate, and I appreciate staff doing that. We have, uh, any, any comment from City Council at this point?
Mayor, I, I would like to just say one thing. I, for, for the record, I hope this goes through and gets funded. Um, we've needed it for longer than I've been alive. Uh, so, you know, I, I'm in full support. I'm glad that we're working together with partners to, to move this forward.
Okay. Does the, uh, any other comments from council? Mr. Secretary, we do have motion second on the floor.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens? Motion passed six to zero with Councilmember Carbone, absent from the chambers.
Okay. Moving in our agenda to item number three, executive sessions under Texas Government Code, Section five five one point zero seven four for personal matters regarding the annual evaluation of the municipal court judge, and, uh, Section five five one point zero seven four for personal matters regarding the annual evaluation of city attorney. Obviously, we can discuss these items in our... Obviously, we can discuss these items in our... Yeah, yeah, we put spotlight on you guys. We can discuss these items with individuals in executive session, but we cannot make a decision in executive session. But returning to open session, we do have new business item two and three for Council consideration at that time. So at this time, we will recess into executive session at eight, eight hundred, eight o'clock there, and it's 8:02 with us in Harris, so I'll say eight o'clock for all about, everybody to see it at this point. And we'll turn the table over to our good friends in the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay. Go ahead and open the City apparently regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission, Monday, November 6th at 8:10 PM. Moving on to item two, the consent agenda, we have items A1 and two, and item B on the consent agenda. Item A1, excuse the absence of PNZ Commissioner Troy Claudia on the October 26, 2017 regular meeting. Item two, approve the PNZ regular meeting minutes from October 26, 2017. And item B, consideration possible action preliminary for Stuart Heights at Savannah, section nine. The Chair wishes to remove item A1 from the consent agenda. Any other items need to be removed? Okay. Now, I hear a motion to approve items A2 and B of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes six, zero. Item A1, I just wish to add my name along with Troy's, because I couldn't make that meeting to the excused absence. Do I hear a motion to approve the amended item A1?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second on the amended motion. All those in favor of amending the motion, signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes six, zero to amend. Now a vote on the amended motion, all those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes six, zero. Moving on to new business, item three A, consideration possible actions, zone change application number zone 17-00018. This is a request of Shan Patel, applicant on behalf of Kirby 59 Partners II LP, represented by Kirk LaGuerta, owner, for approval of a zone change from Office Park OP to General Business GB, zoning district on approximately 2.1367 acres of land, general location northeast corner of County Road 59 in Kirby. Do I hear a motion?
I'll move to approve zone at number 17-00018.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. A little different. Staff have anything to add from the GPH?
Listen.
I guess we'll start with Troy. If you have any comments or questions, I'll listen.
No, nothing to add from my last.
I don't have anything really to add, but I'll rehash a little bit without seeing what the separation's going to be and what the, you know, making sure that those residents are protected from a higher class, or a, you know, more intense zoning. I'm not really in favor of this one.
I think it's probably a good move, and I think the regulations set up the barriers. I don't think, I think that that's pretty well taken care of in the ordinance.
Well, I'm not in favor of the GB change, straight-up GB change. I believe NS, like the neighboring property, would be more appropriate, and then anything additional to that would be a conditional use permit. I'm a no vote on GB, and I'll vote, I would vote for amended motion to Neighborhood Services.
I would too.
Do you want to ask if the applicant would be willing to limit it to that, or would you rather just vote and then pass your recommendation on to City Councils so that they can take whatever action they think is appropriate?
I think it's fair to ask the applicant and get his opinion on the record. You've heard the comments from a couple of commissioners and myself, would the applicant that you represent, would that be a acceptable zone change?
With respect, if it's possible to have two votes, one on the GB and then a motion to amend granting an NS, we could take either one of those to City Council. I mean, I certainly think the PNZ has the authority to...
Well, if you...
Twice.
This, this commission recommends, so it wouldn't be a vote, yes or no for that?
Sure, but...
We would be recommending. Lawrence, can we do that? Or would it be a straight-up yes or no vote on?
If you first voted for a GB, and the majority of people said no to that, then it would take a motion to reconsider by somebody who's in the majority. But at the end of the day, the recommendation letter to City Council is going to be the final action, and not the procedural history that got you to that final action. Although that may be reflected in the minutes, the letter that staff writes to City Council with your recommendation is simply going to say, and it's going to be what your ultimate action is.
Lawrence, can I ask you a follow-up question? For purposes of supermajority vote in front of City Council, if the PNZ votes no to GB, yes to NS, something like that, would it be possible to request City Council to approve a GB over supermajority, or an NS with a simple majority?
You could always ask, the applicant could always ask City Council whatever they want, whether it be to downgrade their request to an NS, or whether that be to go forward with the GB. However, the supermajority of City Council is going to be, or could be triggered by different things. One of those could be your negative recommendation, that could be a trigger for it. The other one, if I did the math correctly, and I think the City Planner was looking at this as well, or, is it senior?
Senior.
Senior Planner, the City was looking at this as well. Yeah, JB, thank you to say, hey, hey, hey.
Congratulations.
So if we, whether the, I think there was a question as to whether the, one of those parcels actually touched it, and I think the corners touch, so that would be an adjacent parcel, so it's seven adjacent property owners. Two of the seven adjacent property owners, this would be separate from people within the 200-foot of utter, but it says land use or area or adjoining property, adjacent property owners in our, our city ordinance. So two out of seven would be 20%, and at the moment... Twenty-eight. I'm sorry, 28. So that would be, that would be more than the 20% at the end of the day, and the result of that would be, it's going to require a supermajority of Council regardless, so. The unfortunate thing is, even if they go forward with a NS recommendation, the property owners don't know about the NS, so we don't know if they would've had the same opposition. So we have to treat their opposition to the request that we have here. And if we downgrade, we couldn't change that, so.
Well, a question, though, is there, is there an opportunity to address neighborhood concerns and have a protest withdrawn between now and City Council consideration?
Yes.
Thus only triggering supermajority requirements if the PNZ votes no, or recommends denial?
Yes, so the UDC and state law afford people to withdraw their negative recommendation or their opposition to things, and that, that could change that supermajority requirement. That would be separate from your vote, though. If your vote triggers the supermajority, it's still there.
Is there any difference in setback between NS and GB?
Not for, it's still the same buffer, same building setbacks.
It just may, it's just...
It's the usage...
The uses and what's allowable and what needs to come through a CB.
What potential conditions that could get attached to the land in regards to potential adjacency issues, the example being pet care and animal hospitals could be there, those sometimes generate noise complaints. Lighting, if it's a fast food restaurant, you know, and, you know, putting a 30-foot buffer normally addresses the noise, it doesn't always address the light, but you could impose those restrictions with a CUP, you can't do it with a straight zone. I'm sorry, with a straight zone change.
Right. Instead. I'm good with a straight vote. I think Council will get the message either way.
And that's y'all's choice. We typically afford somebody to, we typically afford an applicant the opportunity to, to say whether they're okay with what I think at least three people indicated in the discussion, which was that they'd be okay with NS but not with GB. The difference on that to the applicant, which is why we try to give them the opportunity, is if you go for no, and then City Council goes for no, and they don't also change it to the NS, and then they want to come back for NS after that, they have to pay for everything again. And if they say, "We're fine with NS, and that's what your recommendation is, and that's what City Council goes with," there's no additional charge on that. It's covered in this application fee.
So going back to the applicant, that was my original question. Reading the T-leads here, we'll soon know on a vote. If, I haven't heard the motion to amend, if I don't hear it, I'll make it myself to amend this to Neighborhood Services and vote on that straight up.
That's right, we would welcome a recommendation to rezone to GB in accordance with staff's recommendation. If that fails, we would request that the commission make a motion reconsider and take a vote on whether to recommend NS rezoning.
Tomato, tomato, it's the same way, we get to the same result, we just have to take two steps, if I understand that correctly.
It's really important to mean that City Council not be required to approve an NS designation by a supermajority. At least some rezoning, I think, is appropriate to be consistent with the future land use plan, but if it has to be done by a supermajority, even rezoning to NS could be called into question.
It's your prerogative, it's, it's y'all's prerogative as whether somebody wants to call the vote and go on the GB and then revisit the issue, or whether you just want to make a motion to amend, and I'll leave that to the wisdom of the body.
To me, I'm, I'm simple-minded. If this, if this body votes to amend, and it's a majority that votes to amend to NS, and then we vote on that, then we've done the same thing as voting no to a GB. So, do we have any, do I hear any motions?
Daniel, I'll make a motion to amend it to an NS from a GB.
Do we have a motion to amend? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to amend from GB to NS. All those in favor of amending the motion, signify by raising your right hand? All in, six, zero. Okay, so now we have an amended motion on the table, changing from General Business rezon to Neighborhood Services NS. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by raising your right hand? All those opposed? Motion passes five to one.
Excuse me, Chair, could we still get a vote on the submitted application item? The agenda item is a vote on GB, so I, I welcome the vote on NS, but there still has to be a vote on the main application.
And I would just say that with the motion to amend, whether the developer wanted the motion to amend or not, it's within the body's discretion, it's within the board's discretion to make a motion to amend, and that's what y'all have done. So now if Council wants to go with a more intensive land use, they would have to do a supermajority, but they would have to do a supermajority based on the number of lots adjoining it regardless, so.
Well, Lawrence, if I could understand from your, from your previous advice, that I thought what was going to happen is that the Planning and Zoning Commission was going to take a vote on the main item. If that vote failed, there would be a motion to reconsider, but there still hasn't been a vote on the main item.
They could have gone that way, they chose to not go that way.
Okay.
And, you know, historically, we've done this.
Okay.
First times.
Okay.
And just so that we can get, because there is a way to take away the supermajority NS vote, which is by having one of the two dissenting people sign saying that they, it's...
Oh, from the land use perspective, that would remove one of the triggers to a supermajority vote.
Right.
Another trigger to a supermajority vote would be if City Council wanted to upgrade this to a more intensive use, contrary to PNZ's recommendation, it would still take a supermajority vote of Council.
Okay, so we're sitting on a supermajority.
Yep.
Cool, got it.
Okay, I just see our change as a unanimous no to GB, that's the way I read that, and I believe Council will as well. So moving on to item three, discussion items, Commissioner Activity Report. Anyone? Okay, hearing done. Next regular PNZ meeting, November 20th. Everybody grabs their calendar.
Yeah, I'm not going to be here.
As far as I know, I'll be here.
Excuse us, Chairman, can everyone please let us know as soon as possible when you reach your limits of community here and I, if you would, if you all want to, I would give us a call to let's plan for it.
I did have one item on Commissioner Activity Report, sorry to back up one. A local HOA representative contacted me about our procedures when subdivisions are turned over to, from developer-run HOAs to resident-owned HOAs, and as far as when the property is deeded over from the developers to the HOA. Understand there's been some discussion with staff on other levels about this with some, with one neighborhood in particular, but it is kind of an interest to me, when we see major developments, planned developments that are much larger, there seems to be a plan of how that takes place. But I think we have kind of a catch-22 on the smaller developments, when, when that process actually takes place for common areas and such of the deeding. And I'd like to look into how our UDC could be improved to make sure that all properties that are going to be in control of HOAs in the end, like we're requesting developers to build parks first when they develop neighborhoods now, we used to not do that, that these properties that are common areas to the HOA get deeded to them when that HOA is created, if that's, even if that's possible, if that's something we can look at in changing, slightly changing the UDC in regards to that. That's all I had. Anyone else? Okay, hearing none, we'll adjourn at 8:28.
Okay. Councilmember Turner from the Executive Mission at 9:22. The thundering bore of microphones. Moving to new business item number two, Considering Possible Action Regarding the Annual Evaluation of Municipal Court Judge.
Thank you, Mayor. I might make a motion that we approve the adjustment as discussed, salary adjustment as discussed in exact session.
Second.
Okay, we have motion and a second and discussion on that item. Eric Dunn?
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens? Motion passed seven to zero.
Move item three, Considering Possible Action Regarding the Annual Evaluation of the City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Make a motion that we approve the adjustment to the salary as discussed in exec session for the city attorney.
Second.
We have a motion in the circuit. Mr. Secretary, we have motion second on the floor.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens? Motion carried seven to zero.
Okay. The council is adjourned from the executive session and regular meeting at 9:24.